All right, good enough. Let's call the meeting to order. I'm going to ask for flag of allegiance. Flag of allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America. Intimate to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and for their dignity and justice.
Any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor. Just for to reiterate with counsel, since this is a special meeting, we are restricted to what is on the agenda for purposes of discussion today. We have no changes to the agenda.
Okay. How do you guys feel about the agenda? Motion? Second by Seepersad, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, general business. Item, claims and electronic transfers. Okay. Uh, we don't do consent on special.
I typically don't.
Yeah.
We have to approve it.
Anyone want to discuss anything on this? Anyone want a presentation or anything? Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the claims and electronic transfers.
Motion by Timmerman, second by Seepersad, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Next, professional service agreement with Leo Daley.
As counsel is aware, they had directed staff to prepare professional service agreement for Leo Daley for the design and construction management services associated with Police Department addition to City Hall. Mark has been working diligently on that. He can go into a little bit more detail on it, but long and short, generally when you get into architectural agreements, a lot of time is spent dealing with the liability issues. Architects want to do the work, but assume no liability. And city attorneys want to make sure that consultants assume all liability. And so we had to work through those issues, which we have done. The proposal is consistent with the original full scope proposal that they provided us. Six point two five percent of the estimated construction cost. Mark was able to negotiate into the agreement that there's a plus or minus five percent correction element, meaning that if the actual bids that come in are more than five percent higher or lower than what the estimate is at this point, there'll be an adjustment to the contract. So it serves as protection both to us and to the architect as well.
Anyone have any questions on that? Oh, a couple of questions. I saw somewhere that there's 250,000 with the work being done, proposed work being done on the old PD?
Yep. Counsel will recall that the proposal was that with the addition over here, there's still work. We have to do the existing PD to preserve that asset. So that would be structural work, HVAC and some other items that need to be done.
In order to use that, we gotta bring the HVAC up to grade, up to standards. We've got a mold problem in there, maybe a little bit of asbestos as well. Originally, we were looking at 400,000 of that, but we cut it down to 250. We'll just get what we can get done for that to make it safe enough to use there as well, too.
Then we'll be able to repurpose that building and use it for just something else?
The intent in the near term is to preserve the asset. So then when we find funding, we can repurpose that building to another use. One of the common discussion items for that repurposing would be is like a community space.
If we can afford, if it's enough to upgrade it to a point where we can use it for conference space if we want to or something like that, that'd be great. But down the road, if we want to use it as another type of park shelter, because that's one thing I hear over in Elko is why don't we have one there? We could do that. We'll preserve some room in there for the kitchen space, but we gotta tear all that stuff out of there. It's really not up to grade. And we'll do the same thing we did here. We never paid for the refrigerator or the stove over there. Eventually you'll get donations for something like that as well, too. So we'll see how far we get with that, I think. But that's the, that's the amount that the architect myself felt that we're, it should get us up to a point where we can at least store things in there and not worry about people getting sick from mold and that kind of thing in there as well, too. So we'll see how it goes there. The other thing I should mention is I learned a lot about architectural contracts. So what you have here is the first flip side of that is just the agreement itself. And then the second one, which looks like it the same and it's all crossed out with all sorts of red marks on it. That's what Andrea and I did with that as well, too. It also includes all, just so you know, she's read the whole thing and it includes all of her changes and recommendations in there as well, too. So it's not, because if staff did this on their own, it's always good to have Andrea look at it as well, too.
Sure. And the six point two five percent, is that, that number struck me as kind of high. Is that typical for what we've done?
The other proposal I received was eight percent.
Eight percent and nine percent.
Okay. Well, this would be less.
Yeah. Although to be fair, we were originally talking about 1.2 million or something like that. And, you know, normally as the amount goes up, it should be a little less. But they stuck that at six point two five. They all stuck to the 20,000 and 2,000, which I commend them for doing that, even though the amounts are greater, they stayed the same.
Okay.
When you look at it in total for what we're going to do, about 15,000 of that is for the renovation or if you will, securing the present Police Department. If you deducted that from the 109, you're about, you're about 94. If recall, it was about 86 minus the nine for the first phase, so it's 75. So it's really only, it's about 20 grand more than it was, even though the project's a lot larger than it used to be there as well, so.
Josh, are you gonna be voting on this one? From out there. Doesn't, I mean, what matters to the record? I'm gonna be voting no, so.
Okay. I think we just need to do rule call then, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the architectural services by Leo Daley.
Motion by Timmerman, second by Seepersad, any further discussion?
Do you want to elaborate?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm consistent with the last time we discussed this. I'm voting against it because I just don't agree with the remodel of City Hall. And I feel we should have been, we should be focusing on remodeling the police station and looking to save money where we can on this, since there's a lot of money that we're talking about. So I'm not, I can't vote yes on authorizing this, but also not gonna cause a big fit about it either, so. With that, let's have a rule call vote. Does that answer your question?
I'm, I still stand.
You're a yes?
Yes, I'm a yes.
Yes.
Okay, you're a yes?
Yes.
Josh, you're a yes? I'm a no. Motion passes three one. Next item, resignation of Councilmember Schriftenberg.
Councilmember Schriftenberg, who's with us, has submitted his resignation effective last Thursday, or excuse me, last Wednesday. The purpose for is simply just relocation. Since John has relocated outside the city limits, he's no longer able to serve as a councilperson. The council's being asked to pass resolution 1983, accepting the council member resignation and declaring a vacancy on the city council. Under state statute, the council is required, if there's less than, to appoint somebody to replace that position. Since there's less than half the term on that seat, it isn't an appointment until the next general election. It's just an appointment till that position, which will normally be up for election, which would be next fall. So we're looking at an appointment that would be a little over one year in length. There's nothing under statute that gives the council any specific direction on how to make the appointment. It is a political appointment. You could just simply point out in the audience tonight and say, hey, we're the gentleman in the bandana. We're gonna appoint you to the city council, and if they wanted to, they could, they could serve. The, in the past, the council, though, has chosen to post it, take applications and interview interested individuals and then make an appointment from that standpoint. So we would be looking for direction from council relative to the process, even after accepting the resignation, so that we can get that going and shorten the period of time in which we have a vacancy on the council.
So how do you, how do you want this done, just as a discussion item? Or do you want an actual vote?
Uh, we'll need a vote on 1983 and then discussion and direction. And if there's consensus, that's adequate. If there's disagreement, then always, you can always do a motion. But you guys are good at finding consensus on those types of items.
Okay. Well, first, should we, you guys want to vote on the resolution? And then discuss how to fill it?
So motion to accept resolution 1983?
Motion by Timmerman, second by Seepersad.
That is, that's voting, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Oh, you nailed it, done. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Motion passes. And then as far as what to do with the opening spot? I mean, my preference is always to post. It's consistent with what we've been saying, but.
I agree with what you've been hearing that we posted.
I need to throw you guys for a look here, but I would like to see if we could appoint somebody.
Well, appoint someone without the posting process taking place?
Yes.
Okay.
Just because we only had two applications last time? Or three, I should say, right, because John. I just don't feel with the length of time that it's been that we would probably have any different applicants. I don't know. Not trying to assume anything, but I mean, it hasn't been that long, so. I don't think that we need to waste time posting. That's just my thought process.
Josh, do you have any thoughts on it?
I mean, if we weren't going to post, I guess I would suggest that, I mean, you reach out to the, the former applicants that have expressed interest. But I mean, that'd be the only deviation that I guess I would recommend. Otherwise, I would do with what we do typically is post and go through that process. I mean, we can, we've gotten good at it unfortunately and have been able to kind of, kind of fly through it, so.
We typically, if we've had a recent posting, we'll typically notify other candidates to make sure they're aware that the position's been posted again. So Kelly and Amanda would be notified.
I mean, could they, if they are the only two candidates that post, would be, is there a way to expedite the process, knowing that we just have those candidates?
We'd come back to council and let, let you know. And if they were the only two candidates, or only one of them is the only candidate that applied, it would be council discretion on how you want to handle it at that point. We just keep you advised of the process.
I think that's what I agree. You got the flexibility to apply to our interviews or whatever.
That's kind of my position as well. You're okay with that?
Yep.
All right, so since like the council's looking to post and.
How long does it have to stay posted for?
Typically, we post it for three weeks.
Is there a shorter time you can post?
We can post it as short as you want us to. The reality is most people, if they're interested, it's the awareness decision that they want to do it, internal discussions with family and then filling out the application. It's not a lengthy application. I wouldn't go shorter than two weeks, though, just based on past discussions with other applicants on that thought process.
Two weeks, it would take us to the next meeting on the 21st. Should the posting close in time by then? Yeah, it would.
Yeah, it would be done on the 18th.
So we could potentially make a selection on the 21st, then?
Yes, we already have a very full meeting on the 21st.
When we got into the process discussion, I was gonna suggest that if we're gonna be doing interviews, that we schedule them before the regular meeting. I'm already looking at possibly asking the council to extend the work session on that meeting already.
So two weeks.
And an agreement? Two weeks?
So directed.
All right, next up, item authorize hire a full-time police officer.
Real simple. At the meeting last week, the council had authorized posting for a part-time officer position to replace the resignation of one of our part-time officers. However, one of our full-time officers has requested being re, changing their status to part-time like that position. So as a result, I'm coming back to the council and asking the council to authorize hiring a full-time position to replace that officer once they've been reclassified.
Fine, good.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you vote, set some media vote up?
Yes.
Anyone?
Motion to authorize a full-time police officer.
Motion by Timmerman, second by Seepersad, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. All right, now it's time for the meeting part of the meeting. Josh, you're, you're waiting to come back here. All right, always happy to have additional guests.
It's all good.
The council give it just one minute to warm up while it's happening. I'll give the quick recap. So at our last work session, the council had been given a presentation on the utility fund rate analysis, which is essentially a presentation of the outputs out of our financial model that we use for predicting future cash balances in the utility funds and as part of that, what type of rate structure we need to keep the funds healthy or moving in a healthy direction. It was a hour meeting. We, it was kind of like drinking from a fire hose from a council standpoint. Provide a lot of information. Coming out of that, the council had provided staff with four very clear scenarios that they wanted to discuss further at this work session. So I'm not looking to recap all of that information, but simply move straight into the scenarios that the council had directed, the outcome of those when we plug those scenarios into the model and then get direction from council. So what we're looking for is clear direction on any changes to the rate structures from the base model that was presented from the council for purposes of adopting rates next year and plugging into the budget. And then to confirm with the council that there are no other changes that you would be looking for outside of the water rate scenarios that we're talking about. So moving on. The mayor had requested some information about getting a better understanding, more detail on how the breakdown of users within the various tiers. Because the scenarios that we're talking about are talking about possible modifications to tier three, which is the highest tier, and tier two, which is the middle tier from a usage standpoint. So if you take a look at the 2018 data that we had prepared for council, this takes a look at December, January, and February. These are averaging months and are typically the lowest usage months. You're not gonna have people filling pools, washing cars, watering lawns. These are typically gonna be just normal usage. And you'll see that generally speaking, the usage in those months is fairly consistent. You'll see that overwhelmingly, 98, 98, 99% of the usage is at tier one, which is the lowest tier usage. This is based on all of the residential accounts, which about 1375. So very, very strong indicators with regards to the level of usage. There's a little bit of usage above that, but I can tell you from looking at the data that most of the usage that makes it into tier two is just barely into tier two. Our tier breakdown is from, tier one is zero to 10,000 gallons a month. Tier two is over 10,000 up to 20,000, and then tier three is over 20,000. Just, you know, to get to 20,000 gallons in a month in a house in the winter is either a leak, inadvertent use, or some very unusual filling of indoor pool. Something strange going on there, yeah. When you take a look at irrigation, we do have to note that 2018 relative to historical measures is a little bit of a wetter year. But what you see is that still the overwhelming majority of the usage during those months was at tier one, where you were looking at 77 up to 92% of the users keeping all their usage within the tier one range. Clearly, I think it would be very hard, very far reached to assume that June was probably wetter than July and August, and July and August are very terrible. You'll note that between 15 and 19% of the users were into tier two and that there was a small percentage, 5% or less, that was at tier three. Tier three is gonna be 20,000 gallons or more and above from a usage standpoint and typically make up throughout the year a very small percentage of users. Obviously, if it was a dry year, you'd probably see an expansion of both the tier two and tier three. But I don't think that at any point you're gonna see tier two, you're still gonna see rough proportions. Tier two might get a little bit bigger as people are watering more and you might see a proportional increase in tier three, but the overwhelming majority is still gonna be at tier one. So that's kind of the breakdown. Is there any questions about this data? Okay. So the council had requested four scenarios, three variations of adjusting that involve the elimination of the tier three, the highest tier. And as we talked last week, when we looked at it, because there's such limited usage at tier three, changes to the tier three amount or elimination to tier three has a limited impact on the overall health of the fund because the revenue is because of the limited number of users. It just isn't the same as it is at tier two and especially at tier one. So scenario one was an inflationary adjustment to the base fee, tier one and tier two. So everything would occur per the base model. However, tier three would be eliminated. So basically, once you reached 20,000, or once you reach 10,000 gallons, everything above that would be the same price. When you take a look at it, we have the base assumption. And in that, for the audience members that are here today, just for their benefit, I'm just gonna go through what the chart is. Council's seen these many, many times, is we have another piece of information on the chart. On the bottom, we have the projected development that would be occurring. We do that for two reasons. One, we collect fees from developers, pay for capital, infrastructure at the time of development. But then we also have new users that are coming to the system. Of course, that's gonna have an impact on the financial model. The lines that you see above in the water fund is you'll see that purple line just below the rust color line. That is based on our city's policies, the minimum reserve balance that we want to maintain. And you will notice that our current health is that our funds are not in great position right now. We haven't had a lot of development over the last decade and we've had built a lot of infrastructure, mostly the water treatment facility, which was mandated by the state. And so our reserves have tended to decline. You'll also note that it starts to pick up and improve fairly rapidly. And what we found in our financial model is that a modest amount of development occurring on a regular basis is a significant contributor to the health of the fund. Well, this projects is that by mid 2020s, if the model performs as presented, we expect that we would be back to a point where we would be at that desired minimum fund balance. The fund would be considered healthy. And that would give us greater capacity than to modify rates and the rate structure at that point. The other two lines, the rust colored line, that is the minimum fund balance that we are contractually obligated to maintain based on our loan that we received from a public finance agency for the water. So that's not a discretionary line. It's not one made by policy or contractually obligated to either maintain or get back to it as soon as we reasonably can. And then the blue, light blue line above is our annual debt service that we have to pay. And of course, most of that is our treatment facility. So as you look at this, this is the base model. This base model assumes this level of development and assumes a 3% inflationary adjustment to fees on an annual basis. The model here reflects the scenario that I just outlined. And in this scenario, you will note that there is a modest adjustment relative to the health of the fund. You're looking at approximately 250, uh, 100, $50,000 drop in the reserve balance in the fund. And you'll note that it pushes it out roughly a year further before we're projected to be back to the same point of relative health within the fund. And it does flatten just a little bit, but the adjustment is very modest relative to some of the scenarios that we're gonna take a look at. As we continue on and we look at scenario two. Scenario two includes an inflationary adjustment to the base fee and tier one. It still includes the elimination of tier three, but it looks at a reduction in tier two. So reductions, that was broad direction provided by the council. And so we presented an option A and an option B. Option A is a smaller reduction. Option B is a more significant reduction. You'll note that under option A, you'll see a reduction that is a little bit greater than you saw in scenario one. In option B, you'll see that it's a little bit more significant. So you're looking at a drop from an ending balance in the ballpark of $909,000 down to 661, so almost a 30% drop under that scenario, but still a notable drop with regards to option A. Scenario three was no inflationary adjustment to the base fee, tier one or tier two, and elimination of tier three. So this is basically keep all rates flat and eliminate tier three. In this scenario, the fund basically flatlines, stays in a precarious financial position going forward. This is not a scenario that staff would recommend under any circumstances. Option three was a little bit different. This one took a look at making, keep it, doing an inflationary adjustment to the base fee and tier one, but looking at reducing tiers two and tier three. Under this scenario, we presented option A, which was a smaller reduction, going from $20 per thousand gallons down to 1650 in tier three and going from, uh, where are we at? And then going down to, I believe it was $12 in tier two. And then option B is going down to, excuse me, $10, $9.25 in tier two. And then under tier three, goes down to $12 and $8 respectively. You'll note that under option A, the results are actually very similar to scenario one that was presented to the council and just a couple of minutes ago. And option B has a much more significant impact on the health of the fund, moving out probably a year before we get back to that point. A flatter recovery rate, which means greater risk from a financial standpoint is something unexpected outside of the model occurs. So long and short, those are the three models we present, or three scenarios we presented to the council to take a look at ahead of time. Really, we're just looking for direction at this point as to which scenario you would like us to pursue or if there's another option that you'd like us to pursue with regards to rate structures for 2020.
I have a question. There's been two answers.
Can we just, um? Will you start your question?
Tom, I just, I'll apologize now because I'm sure you've already explained these at a meeting at some point over the years, but. First is kind of, when you're looking at those, the bar graph.
Yep.
So when we're projecting out into the future, let's just say 2024, you have, I mean, we're projecting new constructions during the year and actual projected units. So. I'm just, I'm struggling following, how does that, does that actually work? Actual, projected, units versus.
These are actuals.
No, in future years, I'm looking at.
Those are projected. So if you recall at the last meeting, we presented a fairly detailed chart identifying the assumptions that related to development phases and number of units that went into those assumptions.
But I mean, I guess what I'm saying is what is the difference when? The, I guess the gold or green line is actual projected and the red is actual, when we're talking about the future? Oh, excuse me, the red is?
No, red, red is new housing units, green is flat.
Okay, that's, that's what it was, flats versus new housing units, okay. The second question just kind of has more to do with just the model itself. I just, I want to make sure I understand this, right? So the, so I recall correctly from the last meeting, the, the design of the base fee is purely to serve as debt, right? Correct?
Not entirely. The, the purpose for it is generally to serve as capital infrastructure.
Okay.
We're talking the base fee.
I'm talking the base fee.
So the purpose for the base fee is generally intended to fund fixed costs within the operating system. So whether or not we pump a gallon of water, we have to have a water treatment facility. So whether or not we pump a gallon of water, we have to have a water treatment facility, as an example. We have to have a water tower. A lot of times, those are capital assets because they need to be in place regardless of treatment. The usage fee is intended to generally cover costs that are related to the actual production of what we're selling or the treatment of what we're charging for. And to be perfectly honest, there is some subjectivity, and on some of those items, you can make an argument as to what piece it would go into. What we've seen is that generally, that appears to be very proportionally when you take snapshots of it in the stormwater fund and in the wastewater fund. It's different in the wastewater or the water fund because we don't have enough development, and development helps pay for that capital infrastructure as well to fund that. So we're fronting it. The current users on the system are helping front end the cost of that mandated piece of infrastructure that's out there. So when that was built, there was a very, um, a detailed analysis and a very conscious decision by the city council that we needed to raise the base fee to make sure that we had consistent revenue. And the logic of it being in the base fee as opposed to the user fee was what we just talked about, is that's a piece of infrastructure that has to be there regardless of whether we pump one gallon or a hundred million.
So in general terms, that's covering really the operating costs. The base fee is really covering all the operating costs that are going, regardless of how much we pump water, which would include the debt service?
Yes.
Yeah, you got to have a guy there whether you pump one gallon or a hundred thousand.
Okay, so the debt service part is covered. And the debt services isn't changing at all during these years, it's not an adjustable rate deal, right?
So, okay. And so we, we're relying on the funds primarily from the actual rate structure, the revenue we're getting from the rate structure to service the, to primarily service the debt then, or, I guess that's where I'm confused.
Right now, our primary revenue source to fund the debt is the base, is revenues from the base fee and from development revenues.
Okay, and then the fee that's coming from the actual tiers and that, and that goes to...
To cover operational costs related to production.
Well, for tier one...
For tier...
The upper tiers are really more about influencing usage than they are about generating revenue.
So we don't own the water underground, that's owned by the state of Minnesota. They give us a permit to be able to pump it out of the ground. I'm simplifying this to a large degree. It's part of getting that appropriation permit. They don't want over unrestricted usage of that water, so they, as part of that, they want us to have a rate structure in place that's going to discourage higher and unnecessary usage. Our current rate structure as it's set up is one of the most aggressive around to discourage that higher, to discourage that higher usage. But there's a financial reason why we do it as well. As we talked about at the workshop, if we have more usage, a lot of our pieces of infrastructure in the city, like storage, like water towers and underground storage, they have to be designed to handle peak usage. And so if you have people, everybody's just going to unfettered water their lawn, that peak usage is going to go up. I need to have enough storage in the water tower underground to be able to handle that. The treatment facility has to be able to pump out enough water so that we don't lose water. Believe it or not, in the time that I've been here, we've lost water in the city. The water tower ran out twice. Now, it's, that was over a decade ago, but it can happen. So you have to design for it, which means that you have to do, you have to pay for that capital infrastructure, right? So you have to build a water tower. It's about a buck a gallon?
Yep.
So a million gallon water, how are your thoughts? You're going to pay for that debt service over ten, fifteen years. The lifespan of that water tower is eighty years. You have that front end cost, and so the idea is that if you can reduce having to build that big capital infrastructure before you do, the usage that you're having that's demanding the payment of the structure may not produce enough revenue to actually pay for it. So all those other users on the system are having to pay more. That's the part of the concept behind it.
Okay.
As well. So there's a lot of reasons why we have to...
Yeah, but that being, I mean, kind of what you said, Rich, really kind of some base fee and tier one fee is really, that's where you're getting debt service covered.
That's the main challenge, yes.
And that's, okay. Those are, I think those were my questions. Kate, you had questions?
No, actually, you had them answered.
We had the same questions.
Pretty close to all of them.
So if we were to start tweaking tier two and tier three rates, do we have any concern that we'd see an increase in the higher and unnecessary usage, based on any of these scenarios, that it would drop significantly enough or do it?
So it's kind of like a false negative. We have, we have one of the most aggressive structures around, and as you can see, we have limited tier two and very limited tier one usage. Somebody can sit here and say, oh, that shows that it's working. The reality is, we would never know. I mean, you can't prove it. We've had pretty wet summers the past few years. So, so we honestly don't know. You wouldn't know until you make a change, have a period, some historical information and data to be able to show whether that actually had an impact or not.
We, we have seen some indications that we have a dry period, usage goes up, there's a panic, people start calling City Hall, and usage drops again. Whether that'll soak in on a sustained basis, if we're back to more normal weather patterns, hard to say.
Anecdotal, what we found is that there are large users on the system, and they will pay whatever.
So, in order to protect the financial health of the city and the water funds, yet still do the biggest benefit back to the taxpayers, it seems like option four B would kind of do that, right?
Four B or four A?
I was going to go four A, guys.
I was going to go four A because your fund balance is eight hundred and seven.
Well, I want to point out is this, this option is not, your, your line is flatter. So the fund, which is not in what I would call a great health at the moment, is flatter for longer, so you're, you're any more in a period, positioned for a longer period of time. I don't mean precarious in the fact that we're going to fall off the cliff, but we're not back to the health of the point. If you look at the point by which we cross our policy limit or minimum and PFA minimum are both projected to occur in 2025, the balance isn't quite as good. So what it means is that you're taking, there's a, within the model, there's a little bit more risk, there's more risk to go here than here. Now, here's where the issue comes up. If this does not occur as well as is projected with regards to revenues coming into the system, because you have reduced these fur- further, so it's planning, you're flying towards the mountain, take bigger correction. So what the risk you're really talking about is a bigger correction to your users than you would have otherwise had to do in the future. So this is where you guys get paid the big bucks to pull out the crystal ball and do a risk assessment as to what you feel is reasonable, appropriate balancing the impact to our rate users today against the potential risk and risk to future rate users.
Well, and I think this also assumes that there is no change in debt service. I mean, so there's, there's a lot of assumptions here that we're not, we don't have.
We can't predict where all the expenses might fall.
So I think we need to be conservative, yet aggressive enough to, you know, make an impact or have as much of an impact. This also only takes into account the water fund, which doesn't even touch the sewage or the other funds that we could potentially play around with too that may have some effect, but in cumulative fact, whatever fashion pile onto, maybe a four A, throw in some of the other fund changes that we could keep flat or whatever, have similar impact to the overall payment to, we don't trust them to pay for operating.
Don, what do you think?
I was kind of going towards four A as well.
Oh, three, you had your four A.
Well, I'm four A plus, looking at the other funds too, not just looking at the water fund. So four A plus, whatever else we can do, keeping the other ones flat or adjusting or whatever.
I think we did protect the other.
We did, yeah.
We did. There are things that, now, the funds are, are independent of each other, so they're all on the balance sheet. There is things that we can do that would have very minimal or very modest impact on the other funds, and somebody who mentioned previous conclusions. One is that we could keep the development fees flat. As you know, because, and especially in the water fund, most of the revenue is coming from users on the system. Currently, development fees are relatively, relatively speaking, are a minority revenue source, so changes you make there have less impact on the overall health of the fund. Plus, when you're keeping those flat, you're only talking an inflationary adjustment on significant dollar amounts per unit. So the overall impact on the fund is, is minimal. So that's something that the council could additionally consider. The other thing that you could take a look at is the stormwater fund. Other funds, the stormwater fund is projected to be at that policy minimum reserve balance at the end of the year. And although I did caution the council that we have some looming expenses into the future that fall out beyond that analysis period, it does appear that you could hold all of the fees flat within the stormwater fund for at least this year, because we reevaluate it on a annual basis, without undermining the financial health of that particular fund. So those are two additional areas that I did throughout the council for additional consideration if they wanted to go down without Josh's suggestion.
Actually, I can help you. Mayor, what do you think?
I, I just, I question how much of an impact looking at some of those other funds are really going to have.
So on the, on the regular users utility bill, sorry to point this, Mayor. I mean, if you look at the stormwater, pump the stormwater charge on the utility bill, and utility bill. Not, not an inflation, no, not doing an inflationary increase is going to be very At the same point, when you look at the number of users that we have on the system in non-irrigation and even in irrigation months, changes to tier three and tier through, especially at tier three, aren't going to have any impact on the overwhelming majority of, of users on the system either. I mean, it, it's, it's a direct correlation. If you're, want to make a meaningful impact on how much the average user's paying, it's going to have a tremendous impact on the health of the fund, especially in the water fund. And you saw some, some of the previous scenarios that we provided to council, is that touching base, the base fee and tier one has significant negative effects on the projected health of the fund. What this would do, I think, and we talked, and I think the mayor had pointed this out, when you're talking about tier three and tier two, you're, for the average user, it might be somebody who, for instance, has a unintended usage or something like that. It would soften the goal of that. I have the one month where it's really, really dry and I'm really going to water my lawn, or my sprinkler system got reset and now it ran all the time, or my water softener ran all the time, or I had the loofah toilet, or whatever it is for those people would help soften the goal for those unintended usages.
But I think that's where we have the appeals and there's different things like that, that we can make those adjustments. I, I mean, personally, I would like to help more people, maybe with a less of an impact, but still a handful percent, whatever it might be on our overall water bill per month. You save me five percent of my water bill, sweet, versus I'm never going to water my yard in El Cano Market, so I'm never going to get into tier two or tier three, so you're not going to help me at all by getting rid of tier three or adjusting to tier two. So I'd rather help more people, I guess, and not screw up our funds.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I kind of agree. I, I think where I would probably push back a little bit was that would be, you know, really the difference is between option A and option B on scenario four.
I, I, it doesn't look like that break even point. Looks like it's a year off before we really hit that.
You know, before we hit the number. And option B is reducing the tier one rate by, I think, forty-one percent or something like that.
There was, there was a good number of users during the irrigation months that would be, that would fall in that. No, it's not the majority, but...
When you said tier one, you mean tier three and tier two would adjust the rates? I'm, I'm all for it. If you're going to be more aggressive, I, I...
Yeah, I was thinking to negotiate here would be conservative. So if you want to be the aggressive one on the final, I'll go be as well.
Okay, let's just go now and just get it done. I'm, hey, I'm going to drop there. Go on, what is it?
I mean, I, I think there's so many assumptions in this stuff too. I think we're going to, being honest for five years, I think, I, I think we're going to see the development hit where we're supposed to hit, if not be higher. I think we're always conservative, conservative in our development predictions in this city, so I think we will hit those marks, if not be better. So I don't think we're going to be panicking. And again, if we put infrastructure out to certain places or screw around with this anyway, we're going to have to reevaluate it and see where we're going to be at that point anyway, so...
So are you guys concerned at all about the fund balance being almost a hundred thousand dollars difference between the two points?
I'm just looking bigger picture. I don't care what it is.
And, and that's a good point. So this, between here and here, here is significant, but at the end of the day, our goal is to be above this reserve balance and be below. We actually have a maximum fund policy, it just hasn't been a consideration, so it's not in the chart currently, but once we get over that, we have the ability at that point to start taking, and if this balance is continuing to decline and we don't have foreseeable expenses into the future that are in the model, that gives us the ability to be able to start to control fees. We, we can, we can look at inflationary increases, and even we're starting to look at incremental reductions in the base fee. Those are the types of things that become possible at that particular point in time. But your goal for the next five years is we want to get above these two lines. Both of these achieve it, it's just a question of relative, relative risk financially or how much more correction you might have to make. If you don't hit the mark.
Can I ask a stupid question?
There are no stupid questions.
So the estimated fund balance of eight hundred and seven, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars, they're in option A.
Yep.
Is that money that would be available if we had to go ahead and build a new water tower? Is that where we would take that money from?
No, because a water tower would eat up the reserves, your operating reserves. So if we had, let's say, a major repair or unexpected, or we have to contribute to, as we have developments come in, we contribute to oversizing of pipes. Those are the types of things Rich is referring to. That aren't in the model that we can't predict.
So that extra cushion of a hundred thousand would be nice, that maybe we wouldn't have to take out loans or so forth for those things that pop up, correct?
The steepness of the curve, the steeper the curve, the more push you have in the model is really what it comes down to. Now, one of the things that we talked about, this put me for the benefit of the audience, everybody's going like, well, correct, this top, this, this feathers up. The model naturally, as you guys know, we have consistent revenues for development projections and users forever into the future. From an expense standpoint, we can make assumptions for operating of big capital. We only have in there what we know today. So at some point, that future water tower, or whatever it might be, isn't included in the model, so things start to, start to, to trend up regardless. That's why we also only look at a five year window and also why we do this on an annual basis, because we have to constantly reevaluate.
I like the more aggressive reductions, though, in option B, but that can be, that can go along with option A, if that's where the rest of the council is.
I'm going with option B.
You're fine with option B?
I still like option A, just because I like the balance at the end, but if you guys want to do more aggressive, which surprises me coming from you, then I'm not going to stand in your way.
Josh?
Let's go.
I mean, I mean, I think we can adjust it next year.
Yeah.
It's not that significant of a thing.
It's not a further one.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can reevaluate it if we're...
Yeah.
It's very uncomfortable.
So four B, what about the, what about stormwater and wastewater rates?
Whatever Josh wants to do on the board.
Well, can you refer, didn't we talk at the last meeting about what happens if we do something with those? Didn't we go through all that?
We can go back. There is, there is an impact, and so there's a potential that, oh, there's not much impact for that, not much impact for that, not much impact for that. There's a cumulative effect as well. So if you want, we can go back and take a look at those real quick if you want. I have the rest of the presentation.
I think the only one that I would be interested in looking at would be the stormwater because it is the healthiest.
I can tell you right now that just holding stormwater rates flat, both development and choose, is not going to have...
Not enough impact?
No. That, that stormwater, it's healthy enough and any future capital expenses are far enough out that I think we can do that without, without worry for this next year.
I say we do that. Stormwater flat.
Yep. Well, the development... I'm going to just go back.
Yeah, go back to the development one then. Please, thank you.
So this was the water fund, this was the impact of flat development on wastewater fund. You note that...
You note that there is a difference on the development fees. Again, steepness of the curve, steeper the curve, the more push you have. So we're looking at going from seven, six, 80-ish down to about six, 25-ish, six, 30, somewhere in that range. There's a, there's a notable difference, but it's, it's modest. I wouldn't recommend touching the user fees in wastewater, but this is something I think the council can reasonably consider. If we look at stormwater, I mean, the relative steepness of the curve is very, very similar even if we held to, held rates flat on the development side into the foreseeable future. I, I would feel comfortable here for sure on the development fees if the council wanted to do that.
You'd feel comfortable with the no inflation?
Yes, so we're just holding fees flat, flat, no increases on stormwater.
Would you do the five years?
I think we reevaluate that on an annual basis. For sure, we're talking about one year at this point. I would feel comfortable going flat both on the development and on the user fees within the stormwater fund.
Again, the goal is not to make money. We just want to make sure that the fund is healthy and that we can pay for operations and capital and repair and replacement on the system.
Yep. Right?
So what do you guys want to do wastewater and all of this?
I think we, I think we keep them flat.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to recap. So thanks for coming on.
Yeah, make sure we're all on the same page, please.
So we're going to go with scenario four B. And in scenario four B, we're looking at reductions to tier three and tier two in the water fund. But we're looking at inflationary adjustments to the base fee in tier one. We're looking at no change to any of the fees in stormwater. They would stay the same as the 2019 fees. And we would be looking at keeping the development fees the same as the 2019 fees in wastewater.
Yes.
Yes.
It's a good recap.
It's all a case of idea.
Oh, wow.
I'm not hearing that.
What?
What?
The development fees on the water, in the water fund.
I guess that.
He recapped everything except that.
Was the development fees part of that? I guess I didn't see that as part of the presentation at all.
We didn't. So here's the relative impact. If we kept the development fees flat, you're talking roughly 20 to 30,000 dollars.
If you did it for the one year at the end of the five year period.
Well, we could do no inflation to the development fee for one year and still.
You could do it for one year. I mean, we're just talking, right now, we're talking 2020 fees. We do need to look at the impact further out. Again, as you saw when we made no inflationary increases to the user fees.
Huge impact on the fund, even for one year. But when we're talking to development fees, it's.
Small. No, that is going to get added to, then again, subtracted yet again to option B because it's another, it's the other half of the revenues for that particular fund.
What would that look like then in the chart if we were to stay at no inflation on the development fees in the water fund? What will that do to option B?
Half a second here.
Just dropping another third of that, so just the smidge below.
So.
At what point do we have concerns that whoever the financing people are that care about us getting to that mark actually say, hey, you guys are not doing what you're supposed to be doing?
So that's a, that's a very good question. So in our contract with the public finance agency, we are obligated to make sure we have sufficient reserves to be able to service our operating and basically we have to have sufficient reserves to be able to do business. It's written.
I'm simplifying a little bit, but it's written almost as broadly as that. When we financed the plant, we weren't at the minimum reserves then. And the discussions we had with our loan agent was that as we would make incremental adjustments to our rates over time and we would work towards it. Now, we didn't hit the marks that were assumed at that time because the recession lasted longer and longer and longer than anybody would have anticipated. My take on this, and this is my opinion based on discussions with Becky, is that as long as we are making reasonable attempts to move forward, they're not going to have a problem with it. If we're hitting these marks and we're coming up, good. If we're not hitting these marks from a development standpoint, we're going to have to make bigger adjustments. The argument I would make to her with regards to either option A or option B is that in retrospect, the council has decided that the aggressiveness of the tier structure is not appropriate and they're reducing it, but we're still making inflationary increases to the base fee in tier one, which are the revenue generators as well. So we're working entirely within the intent of that language and our projections still show us getting to where we need to be in roughly the same timeframe. I don't think we'll have a problem. If we do, worst case scenario, they come back and say, next year, you need to make a larger adjustment to your.
Which we, and that's kind of the way we've been operating, so. You okay with, Kate, you with trust?
No, I'm, I'm.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
But we still have to decide what we're doing with the development fees for the.
Right. So you're looking at either being here or here, depending on which model you're in. If you hold the development fees flat and water next year.
And I'm okay with, especially with the fact that I think these numbers are considered anyway to the development.
Yeah. Yeah, so we.
Let's hold it flat.
All right. Kate, Don, you good with that?
Yep. I'm good with that.
So I mean, to summarize, all development fees flat, user fees in stormwater, flat.
User fees in water, scenario four, B.
And can we put a condition on this that Patrick has to write, has to write a front page article in great times that all of this is happening?
We're trying to like.
You need to call Chuck on that. Okay, so based on that, we will then final, start wrapping up the budgets for the utility funds. The revenue side, of course, we need to finish this before we can plug those numbers in for our meeting on the 21st. We need to go through the utility fund budgets, the projected budgets, and potentially interviewing for the council. So what I would suggest is that we plan for probably an hour to an hour and a half just on the budget stuff. And if we are going to be doing interviews, we schedule that pre-six o'clock. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Josh, you?
It's just not even a good idea.
We have to make it work.
All right.
Then I'll keep you, I'll keep you guys advised as the agendas are coming together and, and much, you know.
All right, so let's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Austin, before we adjourn, John, you're going to be missed, man. I, you know, I think we probably all understand, you move out of this city, you move out of the city and you can't do it. But I think you've served the city well and I'm proud to have been working with you for the past few months at least. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, John.
That, anyone want to motion adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, Mr. Zimmerman?
Second.
Second, my super side.
She's just hanging out.
She's just doing. All in favor?
Hi.
I mean, thank you.